Welcome, everybody, to the February 28th, 2022 Planning Commission. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on March 15th, 2022, at 10:30 a.m. Please note that the Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the Commission chambers during the meeting. Speaker request forms look like this, and so they're located in the back of the room on the table. If you want to speak on an item and you are neither the applicant or the agent for the applicant, I would ask that you fill one of these out and put the number of the agenda item on there, and that way I use these to keep things organized here during the meeting. You can go ahead and place them on the corner down there, and I'll come pick them up during I'll wait for the further announcements. First item on the agenda is roll call. That everyone is here, the way it's heard from the board. First item on the agenda is the approval of the February 14th, 2022 minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Noting none, is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is approval of today's agenda. Today's agenda consists of the consent agenda and our regular agenda items. Consent agenda is items three and four, followed by regular commission items five through 22. Are there any changes to the agenda? Noting none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of today's agenda, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to today's consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 1428 for Mount Cavany to review a vacation home rental in agriculture district. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1428 with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 1830 for Hayden Clark to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a single family residence in agriculture district. And staff is recommending to end conditional use permit CU 1830.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Does anyone wish to pull anything from the agenda? Three and four?
I do not.
Do not? Anyone from the membership wish to pull items three and four from the consent agenda? Noting none. For those folks in the audience that are maybe new to this meeting and how things run, the consent agenda is items three and four. The board will vote on both of those items at the same time. Does anyone wish to speak on items three and four? Hearing none, seeing none, staff's recommendation is for approval of today's consent agenda items three and four, is there a motion?
I so move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of the consent agenda, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item five. However, I'm going to hold you up just a little bit here, Madison. I have several speaker request forms in my hands for item 17. Item 17 is the ordinance amendment for the Hard Rock Mining. Staff's recommendation, based on comments that were made at the last meeting and some further investigation, is to postpone that meeting until March 28th. Is that correct? And so I don't want, what I'm saying is, is that when we get to item 17, we're likely to postpone that to March 28th and pick that agenda item back up. I don't want to waste the people that filled these out's time sitting through the meeting today for us to get there and to move that. That being said, if you want to sit through the meeting and you want to give public comment on item 17, you're more than welcome to do that. Just know that that items will likely, that the comments will be received and likely continued until March 28th. Is that clear? Okay. I'll keep these speaker request forms in the order that they are, and like I said, we still have the options both ways. Madison, please continue with item five.
Good morning, Commissioners. Madison Ransome, Planner. Agenda item number five is to allow a multifamily residence on the subject property. The applicant is William and Mavis Jeffrey. They are in the audience if you have any questions. The location is at 3210 Reservoir Road. The size is .86 acre. The access is off Reservoir Road, and there is no special flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that planning commission may consider in the review of the conditional use permit application. I will read the findings, and they are on the screen. Number one, yes, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Excuse me, I'm getting over a cold. Number two, yes, a multifamily dwelling is a residential use. The requested use should not change the residential use of the property. It should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Three, yes, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Number four, yes, the proposed multifamily dwelling unit is in Rapid Valley Sanitary District. All necessary utilities appear to be in place. Five, yes, access is off Reservoir Road via an existing approach. The requested use should not significantly affect the traffic congestion. Number six, yes, the property is zone suburban residential district. Pennington County Zoning Ordinance, Section 303, allows multifamily dwellings with an approved conditional use permit. Seven, yes, the future land use is suburban residential district. Allowing this conditional use permit should be consistent with the current comprehensive plan. There is currently a single family residence on the property. The request was routed for interdepartmental review. No major objections or concerns were received. February 17th, staff performed a site visit and found the single family residence on the property. Staff has not received any complaints regarding this conditional use permit request. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU 2202 with the following conditions, or with conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this one?
Multi-family. Okay, I understand in this particular case, it'll be the family. What happens five years down the road if the addition that's on there, they want to rent that? Is this included in this, or would they have to come back to the well and ask permission
Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. They can rent it as a long-term rental. So, once it's a multifamily, it would be able to be rented in it to two separate owners as long as it's a long-term rental.
Okay.
So 28 days or more.
Okay. Yep. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Brittany, don't go ahead.
Go ahead, Charlie.
That means that then they can be unrelated families.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, we just don't use that in our ordinance, do we?
We do under our definitions, but yes, they can be unrelated. They can use it and rent it separately. The owner doesn't have to live there, as long as it's a long-term rental.
Thank you, Brittany. Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none and seeing none, staff's recommended, recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 22-02 with eight conditions. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of agenda item number five, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Good morning, Commissioner Chutima Saboon, Planning Department. Item six is conditional use permit request CU 2168 to allow an existing single-family resident to be used as a bed and breakfast. The applicants and owners are Delbert and Event Haskell, and they are in the audience today if you have any question for them. The property is 23276 Clear Creek Road. This item has been heard in front of the Planning Commission on January 10th. During that hearing, the staff visited the property and found that the more appropriate use for the subject property is bed and breakfast, not a vacation home rental because the property owner resides on the residence when the house is being rented. The applicant submitted a new conditional use permit request for bed and breakfast, and staff also received a phone call asking what the request is and which planning commission meeting will be on. This morning, staff received an email from the neighbor, which it was given to the commissioners. Staff recommend approval for conditional use, of conditional use permit CU 2168 with, one second, with 19 conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The septic system, it says we can have, that there can be six overnight. And does that include the owners?
Yes, because that is with the way the state consider that is for everyone in the, on the property. So, if the maximum is six people.
There was a copy of their ad that says the number of overnight occupants is six and daytime guests is 12, so I would suggest that the owners probably revise that.
Good point.
Mr. Chair, thank you for the new conditional wording for five and six on the fire pits. I appreciate that. I see it carried through through the whole staff thing. Thank you.
Commissioner McGregor?
Yes.
So, the sign is actually for the overnight maximum. So, when the site has to stay six people because that is from the state, the A and R. However, that mean that it's already include every people, but if you wish to, if you wish that the owner change the sign to be maximum of four people, I can add that as a condition of approval.
There's an ad of theirs in here? That's what I was talking about.
This one is, the one that you saw is the interior informational sign in their house.
Okay.
Yep.
But to Karen's point, the state limits it at six. If they stay there, that's two of the six, which really means they should be, if they intend to stay there, when the guests are there, the number's four, right? So, they need to change their advertising to match if they intend to stay there. If they don't intend to stay there, then it could be six. But if it is a bed and breakfast, then they need to be there.
Right.
So, their advertisement should be updated accordingly. I think we should add that as a, as a condition. Would you agree, Karen?
Sure. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I agree too, because the letter states it based them, from the state is based on a vacation home rental, which they would not be there. And this way, and the state didn't want to issue a new letter, so I think we've got it corrected here.
Yep.
I agree with you. Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Looks like we have one. Do, yeah, please come forward.
I just wanted to say that we've already addressed the number and changed the number in our VRVO advertisement to four.
Oh, you have?
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 21-68 with, there were 19 conditions. The owner has indicated that they have already changed that advertisement, but I would go ahead and state it as item 20 for clarification. To revise it to four.
To four. Oh, sorry. Add the condition that the signage and the advertisement to be four?
Yes.
Okay. Yep.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second for approval of conditional use permit 2168, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item seven is conditional use permit request CU 2172 to allow an existing single-family residence to be used as a vacation home rental. The owner is Todd and Rice Valdera, and local contact and the agent is Leanne McDonald. Leanne is on the Zoom, so if you have any question, she is here to answer those. The location of the vacation, of the vacation home rental is 23686 Newton Fork Road. The current zoning district is agriculture district, and there is no special flood hazard in the area. The zoning ordinance lists seven factors that the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit application. They are as follow. Criteria one, the vacation home rental takes place entirely within an existing residence and should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, vacation home rentals are considered a residential use. Therefore, the requested use should not change the residential use of the property and should not have any long-term negative effect on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Staff cannot predict the effect of the property value in the neighborhood. Criteria three, the requested use should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for use permitted in the district. Criteria four, the vacation home rental utilize the existing on-site wastewater treatment system. All necessary utilities appear to be in place. Criteria five, access is off of Newton Fork, Newton Fork Road via an existing approach. Vacation home rentals are considered a residential use. The requested use should not significantly affect the traffic congestion. Criteria six, the property is zone agriculture district. Vacation home rental are allowed with an approved conditional use permit in the zoning district. Criteria seven, the future land use is agriculture district. The requested use is consistent with the, with this district, with an approved conditional The property consists of a single-family residence, and it has a valid operating permit. The request was routed for an interdepartmental review. Emergency services state that if approved, we need to, we need to have the applicant confirm via photo of each or by field inspection that the assigned house number is posted in accordance with the Pennington County Ordinance number 20 in three location. Staff will include this, will include, will include this as a condition of approval. There is no, no objections or significant concern were received. The applicant submitted all required document under the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance Section 319E. Staff recommend approval of conditional use permit CU 2172 with 17 conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Yes. If you look on the far right of that picture, there's a stairway that goes up to a deck. Is that a separate unit upstairs?
No, it's just one unit. So, the stair on the side that you saw in the previous picture is come up to this second floor. Yep. Yeah, so from this side to that deck and come in to this door.
Would look like such a major thing, I thought, oof, it's a separate deal. Okay, no, that's fine. That's fine.
Yeah.
Further questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Charlie.
I assume, and I see a number of these, and we've been seeing more where covenants were submitted, and the way our ordinance reads, it says specifically related to vacation home rental. In other words, it'd have to be named as a vacation home rental. Do you guys review that for that? We don't see them. And it says the commission and the commissioners, they're supposed to review that. Go ahead. I knew I'd get you up there.
Megan Krueger at the State's Attorney's Office. So, actually, for vacation home rentals, and in our ordinance, it says that the commission may consider the presence of covenants. And from my point of view, as an attorney, I don't necessarily want the commission trying to decide what these covenants say, because I truly believe that covenant is a private agreement between landowners. So, first off, we're thinking about taking that completely out of our ordinance, because really, it should be the property owners that are enforcing their own covenants, not the commission.
Yeah, that was my point, was that we continue to see these and we don't see them. In other words, it's part of the application, but we don't see them. And, and I'm not sure I disagree with you on what you're saying. And the way I read it, it literally would have to read vacation home rental. If I read anything else, you can't consider it.
And mostly, at this point, the way that I have been advising the planning department is if there are covenants being brought up, the individuals that are bringing them up need to hire their own attorney and seek private recourse, because the commission is really not going to look at those covenants.
Thank you.
If they meet our ordinance, otherwise.
Thank you.
It's up to you guys to decide.
I understand what you're saying.
Yep.
In the old days, we didn't get them. We didn't even look at them, because we didn't consider them. Thank you.
So, the vacation home rentals, even if it's in the document, we don't want anything to do with it?
And specifically, our ordinance says the commission may consider the presence of a covenant. It does not say that you have to or that you shall. So, I've taken the position of, there have been fights over covenants that have gone all the, all the way to the Supreme Court of the state of South Dakota, trying to decide what these covenant agreements say. I don't believe that it's in the county's best interest for commissioners to start trying to decide what these agreements say. Because most of the time, they're not clear. It is confusing, and the decisions of the courts have been not always what you expect.
Further questions for staff? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Leanne McDonald, do you have any comments for the board, or are you just there to answer questions if they come up?
Hi, I'm just here to answer questions if they come up.
Noting none, staff's recommended approval of conditional use permit CU 21-72 with 17 conditions. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion?
Just one item. I noted, and you know I pick on this, there is one DBA in here. I believe it's in relation to the naming the home. And I just, I think we need to start including that information in our submittals. At least to see whether they do have a DBA. I think the name of the place is in here, yeah. Newton Haidaway. Just a point, it's a, it's a doing business as, it's these folks and Leanne and whatnot. But I think we've got to look at that too, Megan. Thank you.
Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item eight.
Item is, is a conditional use permit request CU 22-03 to allow a vacation home rental on the subject property. The applicant and landowner is SC Meridian Alalcy. The local contact is Jessica Ginger, and she is on Zoom today, so if you have any question, she's here to answer. The location of the vacation home rental is 5876 Pioneer Circle. The current zoning district is rural residential district, and there is no special flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit application. They are as follow. Criteria one, a vacation home rental takes place in, takes place entirely within an existing residence and should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, vacation home rentals are considered a residential use. Therefore, the requested use should not change the residential nature of the property and should not have any long-term negative effect on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Staff cannot predict the effect of the property value in the neighborhood. Criteria three, the request, the requested use should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Criteria four, the vacation home rental utilize an, an existing on-site wastewater treatment system, and the water is from well. All necessary utilities appear to be in place. Criteria five, access is off of Pioneer Circle via an existing approach. There is a concern regarding safety and one-way in and out to the property. And after speaking with the state attorney, the planning commission may consider the safety concern, or the applicant notify and educate that guests are one-way in and out by providing evacuation plan maps at the signage to state that it's one-way in and out, and also post that on the advertisement of the rental. Criteria six, the property is zone rural residential district. Vacation home rentals are allowed with, with an approved conditional use permit in the zoning district. Criteria seven, the, the future land use is rural residential district. The requested use are, the requested use is consistent within this district with an approved conditional use permit. The property consists of a single-family residence and a valid on-site wastewater treatment system construction permit and operating permit. The request that, the request was routed for interdepartmental review. County Highway made a comment that adequate off-street parking must be provided. Parking in the road railway will not be allowed. This will include, will be included as a conditions of approval. No objections or significant concerns were received. The applicant submitted all the required documents under the, under the zoning ordinance, Section 319E. Staff received several email and letters from neighbors regarding the requested use. And you have all the comment from the public with the package. And you have all the, um, comment from the public with the packet. And we have, um, one more comment that, uh, come in, came in this morning, which I believe Jerry, um, also gave it to you. Um, staff recommend approval of conditional use permit CU twenty-two dot zero-three.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this one?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On both item eight and nine, I noticed they were built as single-family dwellings first, and now a year later, or two years later, they're being switched to vacation home rentals. Is this typical? I mean, is this standard for people that want to build a vacation home rental?
Um, normally what we've seen is that it's already existing residence. And then later on, the applicant come in as a, um, um, request as a vacation home rental. And in this case, it's pretty much the same thing. They come in and apply for a building permit for a single-family residence. Um, at that time, we consider that's a resident use, so we issue a building is for, um, uh, a, a, a single-family residence. And they come in and apply for a conditional use permit for a vacation home rental.
Were the building permits issued to SC Meridian, um, for the single-family residences also?
Um, I haven't checked on that. I can get back to you for, um, that.
And another one is Schoolhouse LLC. I'm just curious because, um, this, I noticed that, um, Larry Tuber has a number of items coming through, throughout the year. So I just wondered if this is, it's how these are processed.
Um, so staff has not, I, I, sorry, I didn't check that who's the applicant. But, um, they come, they came in and then get the building permit and it was approved. So.
Sorry, I just want to, um, kind of elaborate on that with the building permit process. Um, all the building permits require an owner's statement. So if it is an LLC, it has to be the registered agent or the owner that has to sign the building permit application. So there is a requirement that the owner does sign the building permit application.
And are these being rented, right, long-term rentals at this point in time?
Um, no, not yet. So I'm sorry, not yet. I'm sorry. So this house, um, actually, Jessica, are you here to answer that?
I am here.
Is it being, um, rented right now?
We're running it as just a residential rental.
Thank you.
Until, like a regular rental, until we have our conditional use permit, but it's not being rented as a vacation rental right now.
Thanks.
Further questions for staff?
Oh, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I, I noticed this is on a one-way access and, uh, we frequently run into these things, but I, I seldom hear any assessment by fire experts and so forth on what the risk level is here. And, uh, I'm sure that this was mentioned by some of the residents, so I'm sure this will come up. But I'm curious to know if we've ever done much risk assessment, tried to measure or get some feeling for what kind of risk are we putting people at? Is it so marginal that it's not worth, you know, spending much time on? Or does it, does it actually pose a distinct risk to residents over time? And I, I just, uh, think that's sort of a failure on our discussion about these one-way accesses. And yet we, it all seems so, um, anecdotal, quite frankly. And maybe that's the only way to approach it, but, uh, this does bother me a little bit on these roads that, that there's no exit in, in this country, which could easily have a major fire as climate becomes more of problematic. So, uh, I think that's something we should look at at some point.
Um, when, um, staff sent the requested use to, uh, for interdepartmental review, which including the fire, uh, department and also the nine-one-one, the emergency services. And for this case, um, there's no objection or significance, significant concern that, uh, were, were received. Um, so we, we did route it out to, to the department that oversee this stuff. Yep.
Have, have we ever had a fire department express concern about this? I mean, distinct, uh, distinct feeling of, of risk?
Good morning again. Um, we did have a concern that the fire administrator did bring up about these dead-end road systems and forty lot. The forty lot rule is essentially what we call it, um, on a lot split and a building permit request on the Schroeder Road. Um, so he has spoken, uh, excuse me, Jerome Harvey, our fire administrator, has spoken that he does have some concerns on these dead-end road systems, that there's actually a plan in place, there's, um, preventative measures. I do believe in that case, um, that there were fire sprinklers put in the homes, um, in that instance. So.
I, I, you know, my concern is that the people who buy homes there, um, I'm concerned about them, but i- i- it's, they put themselves at risk. Uh, if we have a whole host of vacation home rentals in an area in which there is significant risk, these people are in a sense victims because they're going to only be vaguely aware of any kind of danger. And that's why, uh, I, I, I wish we could approach this with a little more precision. And perhaps there's no other approach, but with, with this case where you have a multiplicity of homes that are being rented in, uh, along a road, uh, I, I think that could truly become problematic in the future. So I just want to exercise that concern. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Go ahead. All right, mine's simple, and I'll get it out of the way. Um, I have still the same concern about the DBAs. We really have a number of them here. And being LLCs limits the liability of those individuals. And I really think we need to, uh, have these part of the process. If both of them, uh, the next one as well, number nine, and then I'll leave it be. But there's LLCs involved. That's a limited liability company. And there's legal ramifications of that particular situation. Thank you.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
Um, do you, and you probably don't know the answer to this, but does the fire administrator send these out to whichever rural fire department serves that area? Those responses might be important to have.
Um, I'm, I can't answer that. I'm sorry. But, um, as a staff, we can also, um, send those to the, 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 the local fi- fire district also.
You send them to?
Not, not this one, but for the future, we can also, um, um, include the local fire district, um, in there too. But as of this one, I fully send it to the, um, the, uh, the county.
Fire administrator, yeah. I'm assuming it would be Whispering Pines, maybe? I guess I, I don't know which fire district, but it would be nice to have their input.
Mr. Chair. There at the end of the road. Go ahead, Lloyd.
Um, thanks Jim and, and Charlie for your input. I thi- I think somewhere's in this packet, I don't remember which other property it was, when you talk about fire exit. Because that was one of my concerns was, you know, we have big discussions on the forty-unit rule and so forth. But I think, you know, rent, sh- short-term rentals, vacation rentals are supplied so much information that, I mean, you open up your book, they have an exit, exit plan out of the house that they're required to, the fire extinguishers. The one thing that I did see further in this package is they had one where they showed the actual exit of the roads, which roads you could get out. That was something I hadn't seen before. Most people just have the exit plan out of the house. So that would probably be a good one to have on, on this one. Is, you know, you get out, you go left, don't go right. You know, I mean, because, uh, these people look through those books to get their Wi-Fi access, that what's required of them and so forth. They actually get more information than long-term renters do in these books, if you really think about it. But you're, I had the concerns with the forty-unit rule too on this, but I think one good thing I'd like to probably see come out of this is something like this, have that other access printed in their, in their book as they're presented when they check in. You know, the regular exit plan from the houses is simple, but one for the road, mapping of the road would be nice.
Further questions for staff? Okay. Um, I only have two speaker request forms, uh, for this item, um, but I would like to preface this a little bit. I, um, I have read through the emails and the correspondence that's come back and, uh, on this. And it appears that there is some history and, and, and certainly, um, some emotions that go along with the, the, what's happening. And, um, I, I would, uh, simply request that, that people that are speaking on this, uh, item um, stick to the, the item at, at hand and, and, and the, the facts associated with it. Um, and if there's other histories and stuff like that, then, uh, I, I don't want the communication with regards to items eight and nine to devolve, um, um, a- at all, and, and stick to those items. So with that, um, the first speaker request form, um, that I have is, uh, Bill Coulson.
Thank you, commissioners, very much for the opportunity to speak. Appreciate it. Um, I want you to know, I live in Spring Canyon Estates. My family settled there in the mid nineteen-sixties when that area was first developed. And I built my home there in nineteen seventy-nine, moved in in nineteen eighty. Our daughter and son-in-law live there as well. And I will tell you that we do have concerns about fire in our neighborhood. Clarkson Road is the only entrance and exit from Sheridan Lake Road into our neighborhood. And you talked several times about the forty-unit rule or forty lot rule, if you will. And I'll tell you that our neighborhood itself is at forty, or awfully close to forty. And there are some just outside the boundaries of Spring Canyon Estates, which access in the same exact way, only on Clarkson Road. So the number is far higher than forty already. And we're, our, our concern about fire is also shared by the WLF Fire District because for several years, they have offered opportunities for residents to partner with state agencies to get trimming done and slash pile burning done and all of that. And in fact, some areas along Clarkson Road, um, that was offered to be paid for completely by not the residents themselves. So I appreciate that very much, but we live right above Spring Creek. If you look up Reptile Gardens, uh, up the canyon from there, it's, it's about three miles as crow flies. If a, if a fire were to get started in that canyon, it would be devastating for us, for sure. Everybody knows the way out. It's the only way to get to town. So that is an issue itself. And then the only other thing that I would ask is those letters that were received from residents, can the residents expect to get something back from the commission in writing about their concerns or not?
So the commission itself does not have an administrative, um, uh, process where, where we, where we as a group come together and, and respond to specific questions or, or that are raised in those emails?
Right.
Um, uh, if there, if there are those comments or those questions that exist, um, that would be something that the staff would have to respond to. Um, and, and so I, I know that there were some specific questions. Those specific questions really should be addressed to staff. They certainly have the history and the knowledge to be able to answer some of those things. And e- for example, some of the emails had questions about some previous decisions that have been made, and the people on this board may not have even been here.
Sure.
Um, and, and so that's where we, we would, we would, we would ask staff to respond to those.
Okay. But they would respond based on your request, based on the letters that we sent? Is that, is that true?
We, we can ask, um, uh, we can ask staff to get back to your questions. Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it very much.
Um, the next speaker request form I have is for Tina Roberts.
Morning. Uh, my name is Tina Roberts. I live next door to the, um, general partner of the three LLCs that own the eleven tax parcels in this neighborhood. Um, of those eleven tax parcels, four are current vacation home rentals. These would be two more, which are items number seven and eight. Um, in all disclosure, I also have a CUP on my property, um, and have a small cabin that used to belong to the LLCs that are of number seven and number eight. I actually bought the lodge at the end of Clarkson Road and on that property in part of the canyon. Um, my concerns are, are not property ownership or what they want to do with their property. I really couldn't care less about that because I believe that property rights are a fundamental right of a human being here in Pennington County. What I'm concerned about is the commercial nature of the path that we're headed down. So, um, I'm an individual with a VHR, and I know you see a lot of VHRs with LLCs, uh, Mr. Johnson, I know you brought that up. Um, but at what point does our rural residential zoned district become commercial when the entities operating them are operating them by getting a building permit as a single-family residence, actually not having anyone live in them? One, number nine actually has no resident. There's no one living in it. Um, and maybe number seven had a rental, uh, a renter during the winter. It is a common practice, uh, for these LLCs to have a winter rental and then a summer rental. So there's another property that will come, probably come before you at some point as a VHR that may turn it into eight or nine VHRs. So that's my specific concern, is that where is the commercial aspect and the commercial nature where you're running a commercial business with a website, with agents, with cleaning crews, with laundry, et cetera? So I want to bring that up. And then the second thing, uh, is I wanted to make sure that you got my map. I spend a lot of time in showing you where these properties are, um, in your packet. You should have gotten that this morning, if you didn't already know that. And then, um, finally, as my last request, I urge you to, um, at the very least, allow the, um, Whispering Pines, uh, volunteer fire department to review what everyone else has brought before you on the fire. I think it's, I think it's in our best interest of the neighborhood, at least they have a review of that before you, um, agree to the CUP. Both seven, or excuse me, both eight and nine. And I thank you very much for your service. I appreciate it.
I have a question. You're concerned about the nature of vacation home rentals and how they differ from other residences. Other than the fact that there's probably fewer people there because they're only rented seasonally, and there may be a small sign that wouldn't normally be in a residential yard, how are they different?
Well, one of the things that I have concern about being a new resident in Pennington County in the last two years is, um, that vacation home rentals take single-family rental opportunities full year round, twelve months out of the year, twenty-four months long-term, out of the rental pool. There are what I call the rabbit hatches, which are, there's rabbit hatches all over town going up, right? And those will quickly get filled. We know that based on the number of population that is starting to increase here in Pennington County. When we take out the available property for someone to either buy as a long-term home to fulfill the American dream of owning a home, we've taken nine of those out of this, out of, out of this neighborhood and turned them into some type of other use property. That's my concern. That's where we start changing the face of what the property is. It's no longer residential. There's not long-term people living there. I don't know my neighbors. I know one of them, or I know two of them, but I don't know my neighbor across the street. The fire, I, I live, I own the canyon. The canyon's on fire. And can I call those people in those VHRs and say, hey, make sure you turn left and not right? I don't know. I, I, I don't know. It's temporary. I can certainly walk across my lawn and knock on my own VHR and say, let me help you get out of here. Now, I would all obviously help other people get out, but I don't know those people and to be in my neighborhood. Does that answer your question?
It does, sort of.
It might not satisfy your answer, but yes, it probably answers your question. It's, I'm more concerned about the pool of single-family residents in this neighborhood, which have been extracted because of the eleven tax parcels.
There are nine properties that are vacation home rentals out of forty? Is that correct?
Of about forty, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Is that, I, I mean, it's an inordinate number, I think, for most neighborhoods. I, I will grant you that, but I do wonder at what point does it become problematic and difficult? How do, at what point does it change the neighborhood? And it may not be nine, it may be two, I don't know, but we've dealt with a lot of vacation home rentals. And many people come and they, they sort of predict disaster in their neighborhood and, and it simply doesn't come to pass.
Certainly, I understand that. I, I, I've owned vacation home rentals for years and years and years in seven states. I, I hear this all the time. I hear this all the time. I mean, I get it. I'm a businessperson. This is, I get it. I totally get what you're saying, and I've been on both sides of that discussion, both for and against. And I don't believe, and I believe that the folks in these LLCs who are running this, I believe that they do screen properly. You know, I give them the benefit of the doubt that they're bringing the right people into the neighborhood, as I do, right? I give them completely the benefit of the doubt. I am not about the LLCs or the owners of these, general partners of these LLCs. That's not my concern. They have a right to property, and they have a right to do with what they want with their property. My question is for the Commission, is in the Planning Commission, at what point does it become commercial and not residential? That's my question, not for them. It's for you. What point does it become commercial?
I don't know if there's a great answer to your question, other than the history that has been around for X number of years. As I understand it, when these things have been challenged in court, the VHRs have always held up as a residential use. And I'm getting the nod from the state's attorney over there that I'm still on track. She'll course correct me if I'm not. And so, as a property owner, and asserting your property rights for that parcel of property, as long as it's held with a residential use, I don't know if there's an answer to your question because it's not considered, it's not considered commercial. It's considered a residential use.
I understand.
There's two sides to that story that we've heard on and off for years and years.
Challenge gets precedence, right? Precedence becomes challenge, and consistency becomes the question in court.
Yeah.
That's always what it is, consistency. So you consistently approve VHRs, and I may be up here again someday, right? For my own conditional use permit again. So you consistently approve them, it's going to be consistently approved legally as well. So it's just a concern. That's all. It's a free-speech country, and I thought I'd stand up here and tell you.
I'm curious where you think the line should be drawn.
I think, I will tell you and admit that because we don't have the covenants of this neighborhood, because this neighborhood is not a H.R.A., it's difficult to then say, "It should be this," or "It should be that," because the neighborhood has not agreed to that, right? So the question about what do I think it should be, it would be easy enough, I mean, just to be honest, it'd be easy enough to get an LLC for every single one of the 11, right? And then, you have a different owner, quote, air quotes. I think that when there's a consistent general partnership ownership, then we start getting into concern on the commercial. And I think that's where the gray area is, and that's more of a, I don't know if you can enforce that though. So I'm concerned about it. I don't have a lot of, I'm not giving you any ideas, let me tell you that, because today I'm not giving you any fresh ideas and coming with any answers and giving you an answer. I know that. I understand that. I get that there's a lot more work to be done in that area.
Sure. Well, I mean, a few weeks ago, there was a very contentious housing subdivision that was aimed at trying to provide low, I won't even say low-income housing, I'll say normal-income housing for houses in the Rapid City area that was fiercely debated. It was a great part of our process. So I don't know if there's an answer to your question, other than the costs seem to be outpacing the ability to purchase.
I know that very well. Thank you. I agree that, I think that one of the things we suffer from in the county is an available pool of housing that's affordable for the person who goes to school and goes to work every morning at eight o'clock in that traffic jam down on Lake Sheridan. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mrs. Roberts? We'll finish with Tina first, and then, any further questions for Mrs. Roberts?
I just, I have a comment.
Okay.
I too agree that we're taking up a lot of the available houses in the Black Hills and turning them into VHRs. We see them every other week, you know, at these meetings. Today, there's, I think it's five out of 14 that are either a bed and breakfast or a vacation home rental, conditional use permit, and that's a lot.
Yeah, I get to, I watch you on YouTube for fun.
Oh, wow.
Because I love watching your commission meetings for fun. Because I'm interested, right? I'm a resident. I want to be involved in my community. And I think it's, I don't know, maybe I'll be up there someday. We'll see.
Got an open chair over there. You're welcome to submit an application.
I know, my name isn't very long, so it'll fit right nicely on there, too.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
I got to respond now, too. You know, a lot of times when you're talking about these housing, what's affordable, you know, that far out of town's, and that property's probably not affordable for what everybody's trying to say affordable is. And who's to say that these bed and breakfasts, even you admit that you do one-off on the side of yours, helps your income, helps pay your taxes? That's what people are looking for. The city and the county are both working hard to, Mr. Stroms out here, accessory buildings on top of their property for their folks to live there. My sister and her daughter both live together because it's affordable that way. The work, to say that somebody, and I have rentals, I'm taking it off the market because, and making money, well, I'm subsidizing too, already. Their rent's less than what my payment is. So some comments don't strike true to me and hit a little hard. You know, when you own these properties, that's, there's a lot of different reasons. And part of it is, people are looking for housing they need to find, make the income to afford it, and some don't. Some just want to rent. Plain and simple. And I was going to ask the applicant about the time and percentage of these people at their property, because quite frankly, I've got one property that I bought for a vacation home rental that I plan on retiring in, but this helps pay for it till that time. I know that, for a fact, the people coming in take better care of my house, my property, better than I rented it out for two months to a person who was getting ready to move into town to a long-term rental that I had, took better care of it than they did. So we get a lot of presumptions that these vacation home rentals are bringing bad people to our neighborhood, and they trash it, and this type of thing. You know, we really do the numbers and look at it. That's not the truth. You mean, five months out of the year, and then it's vacant for the rest. So there is no traffic on those. But I just wanted to share my experience with you and maybe the other Commissioners on this thing.
Yeah, I would really push the Planning Commission to continue to approve neighborhoods and zoning where there is side-by-side-by-side-by lot-by-lot-by-lot housing that takes the, that takes some of the pressure off of me standing up here and saying, "We don't have a big enough pool. We don't have a big enough pool." And I don't think, I'm sure in this county, people can't build fast enough. I know that for a fact. They can't build fast enough. So, you know, it's coming. I just don't want Pennington County to turn into the awful counties of many of the surrounding states of ours that don't agree to the same things I do.
Further questions for Mrs. Roberts? Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Coulson, you wanted to come back up, sir.
Just for a minute, thank you very much. The question came up about how much is enough, actually? And I've learned that there's a proposal in Hill City to say that for vacation rental homes, maybe no more than 8%, right? So I don't know if that's the right number or the wrong number. I really don't know. One other thing I'd like to mention about our area, Spring Canyon Estates, is that we have a private water system. We've got two wells that are being used, and so, water is limited. And all of the lots that are kind of in the area of our neighborhood are not eligible to hook into water because it's an old system that ran a long time. It provides adequate water for those of us that are on it, and there are about six or seven other lots that could hook into the water system if they choose. But beyond that, it's not possible. For example, this piece of property that we're considering now in item number eight, it is not eligible for water. So it doesn't matter, they've got a great septic system, and I will say that the properties that have been built by Mr. Tuber are high-quality properties, no question about that. They've got septic systems and all of that, and I'm assuming he has a cistern there. And where he gets the water for the cistern, I don't know, and I think he has one other well on our property, a private well, that puts out a limited amount of water. But anyway, I just wanted to say that that is a concern for all of us, that water is going to become an issue. So that's all I have to say.
Questions for Mr. Coulson?
Just one comment. What's the minimum lot size out there, roughly? I mean...
Roughly three acres.
Okay.
Roughly.
So this is more horse country than it is suburban residential.
Yes, sir.
And so, unless this changes and you start subdividing some of those, there's not going to be a lot of, you're not going to see density increase dramatically, which would really impact your water situation if all of a sudden somebody went out and said, "Well, I'm going to put a subdivision in here," which I suppose theoretically they might try to do. Anyway, so I would think that in view of the pace of development, the expense of the land, et cetera, I would think you'd be fairly comfortable keeping that rather large horse-country-sized properties, you know, which is a defense, I think, against the water problem.
We hope so, Mr. Strom. We really do. We hope so. And I know that subdividing property isn't as easy as it sounds, right?
Right, yeah.
I mean, there are rules that have to be followed to do that as well, and we understand all of that. So I understand also that it's impossible for us to say, "Okay, I always want to protect my little slice of heaven," because it is a slice of heaven, no doubt. The reality is, is that we live in a world where a lot of people are looking for a place, and we appreciate that, too. We just want to do it safely, and we want to do it in a friendly manner. And as Tina mentioned, too, I have no evidence that any crimes have been committed by anybody that's been there, either rental capacity or otherwise. So I certainly wouldn't accuse anybody of that. We just want to protect our little slice of heaven. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I don't have any additional speaker request forms for item number eight. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak to item number eight? You, sir, please come up. If you would state your name.
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Greg Stroman. I'm representing the applicant in this case. A couple of things I'd like to point out. I think Commissioner La Croix spoke about a posted fire evacuation plan. This is the one, for this property in question, it is posted in the proposed vacation home rental. And there's also property rules that are posted, that would be posted in there also, which talks about a maximum overnight guest of six, maximum daytime occupancy, six guests, number of parking spaces, four, has quiet hours from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. It has a pet policy, additional property rules. And concerning fire, it says, "The use of open fires, fire pits, fireworks, charcoal-burning grills, gas-fired grills, or other devices shall not be allowed without permission from local contact or owner. Owner forbids smoking, open fireworks, charcoal grills, or any personal fire-emitting device." And all of these units, or these homes, they have their own water and their own septic. I know Dr. Tuber initially bought his property out there in 1990 and didn't move in right away. He got called away to the Gulf War, served over there, and then came back. And from time to time, over that last 30 years that he's been a resident out there, he has acquired properties. And at times, he does it with, in an LLC or with a representative, which is not uncommon. That's a perfectly legitimate business practice. And in fact, those LLCs carry, I think, more than sufficient liability insurance if there should be any fire cause at one of these vacation home rentals by someone who's staying there, probably more so than even a homeowner has. He upgraded the timber clearing out there. He's taken down fences to try to allow for the migration of the wildlife out there. He's a conservationist. Everything that he's built, as Mr. Coulson said, is top quality. It's fire-resistant. These properties, as was pointed out, are on a minimum three-acre lots. It's not a typical suburban-type residential neighborhood where we're talking about. These people have considerable distance between homes. It's all been plotted that way, and I think that's the way they wanted it. And so, I do know that, I believe that Ms. Roberts, who spoke today, is fairly new to the area, hasn't lived there as long as the other residents there. And so, her comments may not be in line with the experience that's been out there. And as far as the zoning, that's really not a question for this application. This application is just on number eight today, and whether there's going to be a limit on VHRs in the future is a question for another day. And so, I respectfully ask that the board consider the approval of the application and the planning department's investigation, and go ahead and approve this conditional use permit. And I know that the agent, Jessica Ginger, is online. I don't know if she has anything to add, but I would ask that she be allowed to speak if she wants to speak anymore.
Jessica, do you have any comments for the Commission? We can either take them now, or we can finish with questions with Mr. Stroman, and then come back to you.
I don't have any further comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Stroman? Okay, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Okay. Staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit, CU 22-03, with 17 conditions. Is there a motion?
Stroman.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
The planning and zoning process, certainly support it, that's why I'm here. And vacation home rentals are a perfect example of why we need a planning and zoning process. However, we're running into more and more of these. We're also dealing with a certain percentage of absentee owners that we haven't seen before. We can circle the amount of out-of-state owners on each agenda when we look at them. And in this case, even a new question has come up and involves a local owner, and that's whether there should be a look at the density of some of our conditional use requests. And I'm not going to just pick on vacation home rentals. We probably have others that we should look at, whether there's a density factor involved. But I think you've got to think of that, and that doesn't exist. I'm going to use Mr. Stroman's comment. That's another day. We have a specific set of planning and zoning processes in place, and these issues become sensitive without reviewing them on a regular basis. And I know Britney's department reviews them on a regular basis. They're working on this one right now. So I just want the audience to know that when you look at what we look at up here and what to do or not to do, that's what we're looking at. Thank you.
My comment is that I, knowing that it's a one-way-in, one-way-out access road, it is a concern. That being said, if there's an emergency evacuation route posted in the VHR, in addition, the fire department is at the end of that road, it seems like there, then I think that some of those density concerns, at least the knowledge is provided to the people when they come there and rent them, which is a question and a valid question that has been raised. So just a few comments I had.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
One of the things to add into what you're saying is, I believe all the roads in this particular one are built to the Section 14 requirements already. That makes a great amount of difference with the emergency equipment, which is continually getting bigger and larger and larger. Some of these ones we review, they don't look much better than a small off-road track. Thank you. Thank you.
Right. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item nine.
Item nine is conditional use permit, request CU 22-04 to allow vacation home rental on the subject property. The applicant and owner is Schoolhouse LLC. The local contact is Jessica Ginger. The property address is 9295 Clarkson Road. There is no special flood hazard on the, there's no special flood hazard area on the property. During the site visit, during the site visit, the resident is not habitable. Staff is unable to do an inspection. Therefore, staff recommend to continue conditional use permit 22-04 to the May, the May ninth planning commission meeting.
Could you say that again?
Yeah.
So, I recommend to continue this conditional use permit to the May ninth, the first meeting in May to, for this conditional use permit, because staff is unable to inspect the property. When we get in, this is what it looks like right now. So, I need to see if there's a carbon monoxide detector, smoke detector, if there's a fire extinguisher. Therefore, the staff report went out before the site visit.
The staff report went out before the site visit?
Yes.
Weather came in, you guys couldn't go visit it, you went and visited it. You're saying that the current state of the construction is not ready for approval of this?
Correct.
Unless you'd like to post or continue this to which meeting again?
May ninth, 2022, the first meeting in May. Staff spoke with Mr. Tuber on the phone during the site visit, and he stated that the house should be done by April 30th. Therefore, staff recommend to continue to that, the first week of May.
This has been discussed with the owner?
Yes.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this one?
How long ago was this picture taken? Because if he's, if the applicant's saying 30th of next month, why would we put it up on the night?
The 30th of April. So, the site visit was on Thursday?
On the night, okay.
May ninth, yeah.
Okay. I had my month off.
So, noting, no comments for us. Any further comments for staff? Excuse me.
Just one, it'd be nice to see the owners or the applicants in this case continue to try to develop a larger dialogue with the neighbors to keep the sensitivity down in the next review. You know, it'd be nice to see that, especially since we're dealing with a local owner. We're not dealing with out of town. Just a thought.
Yeah, the temper of the neighbors' comments were quite strong. And I think perhaps the owner would be instructed to be a little more collegial or cogential. And that might help sort of grease the skid, so to speak, here. Because I get a distinct feeling that his neighbors were really up in arms about kind of the way they were treated. So, I don't know if that's kind of what Charlie's referring to, but that always helps.
It wasn't. I just think that it'd be nice to see him continue to try to develop conversation that would reduce the sensitivity of what's going on here under the current regulations and ordinances. Thank you.
Well, and as the chair, I can just say that when I'm reviewing this, and I'm not going to speak for the rest of these folks, but I'm looking at the applicable items and not comments one way or the other. I have two speaker request forms for eight and nine, Mr. Coulson and Mrs. Roberts. Do you want to speak on this again?
I don't need to, sir.
Okay, please come forward.
The only comment I would make on this specific property would be that to Ms. McGregor's commentary earlier that a building permit for a single-family residence not yet complete is for the intention of a VHR.
Noted. Further comments? Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Jessica, you're on Zoom. Do you have any further comments for item nine?
I do not, thank you.
With that, staff's recommending approval of conditional use permit CU 22-04 with, I'm sorry, is recommending to continue CU 22-04 to the May ninth planning commission meeting. Is there?
Second.
Motion in second, further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 10.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, Deputy Planning Director. Item number 10 is conditional use permit 22-05. It is a request to live in a recreational vehicle while building a single-family residence on the subject property. The applicants are Scott and Brooke Sterlington. Their agent is Dale Christensen. He is in the audience if you have any questions for him. Property is 1.76 acres, currently zoned rural residential district. It is vacant of any structures. Access is off rigid loop, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Zoning ordinance lists seven criteria the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. There on the screen, I'll read staff's responses, starting with number one. The requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public, especially considering the temporary nature of the applicant's request. Number two, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. However, staff cannot predict the effect of the property value in the neighborhood. Number three, the requested use should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Number four, access is off rigid loop via two existing approaches. Neither of these approaches are currently permitted through county highway. The RV will utilize the permitted onsite wastewater treatment system. Number five, the requested use is temporary in nature, and it should not significantly affect traffic ingestion. Number six, the current zoning is rural residential district. Temporary uses are allowed in this district with an approved conditional use permit per Pennington County zoning ordinance. And lastly, number seven, the current zoning is rural residential district, the future land use is rural residential district. Again, the nature of the requested use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. As the property sits today, it is vacant of any structures. It does have an approved onsite wastewater treatment system construction permit, as well as an operating permit. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County Highway did state that an approach permit must be filed with the highway department before one of the existing approaches, or for at least one of the existing approaches, and that a variance from the Board of Commissioners must be obtained for the second approach if it's desired. And this is included as a condition of approval. Staff did perform a site visit to the subject property and did verify that there were no structures currently on the property. And with that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 22-05 with conditions.
Questions for staff?
Just one.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Is this, is this, are we going to see more of these where the people are applying to go ahead and live in an RV or temporary family residence? And yet, there's a contractor involved because of our expansion on what we did on billing permits, you know, for contractors and this sort of thing? In other words, we didn't normally see if they were building their own place. We didn't see a contractor involved. Now, we see that there's a contractor here.
Right, I believe he's just acting on their behalf as their agent, but he is.
Is he going to work on it? Is he going to build it?
He's not going to be living in the RV while it's being constructed.
Okay, that's, that was my point, where are we headed with this?
Right, this is solely for the property owner to live in the RV while he constructs the house.
Thank you.
Further questions? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Seeing none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 22-05 with 12 conditions.
Second.
Motion in second, further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 11.
Item 11 is layout plan 22-02 to create Lot A of Lot 1 of Martha Washington Place subdivision. The applicant and landowner is Rodney Johnson, operating under Martha Washington Place LLC. Their agent is KTM Design Solutions. Location of the property is approximately 0.45 mile east of the intersection of Old Hill City Road and Wolfermite Road. It is currently 84.69 acres, currently zoned agriculture district. It is vacant of any structures or utilities. Access is off Old Hill City Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. You can see on the screen, I have the existing property on the left, proposed on the right. This is a portion of a large parcel already, so I had circled in blue the portion that is being subdivided off. As it sits today, like I said, it is vacant of any structures or utilities. It is 84.69 acres. Proposed Lot A on the right-hand side of the screen will become 14.09 acres, and the remaining balance of Lot 1 of Martha Washington Place subdivision will become 70.6 acres. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and County Highway stated that they had a concern with the 40-foot wide access easement because any future development may require access improvements be wider than 40 feet. And staff's comment to that is that access requirements for future development and subdivision will be addressed through the plating process at that time. Emergency services also had a comment stating that Old Hill City Road needs to be labeled on the plat, and that is included as a condition of approval. With that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. And staff recommends approval of layout plan 22-02 with conditions.
Questions for staff?
Just one. The, Jason, the highway department indicated it may require an access wider than 40 feet. Is that something to do with the lay of the land?
I'm not exactly sure what they were alluding to at that point.
You comfortable with that, though?
Further subdivision and that remaining balance of this parcel, it could possibly need to be wider to meet ordinance 14 standards.
I see.
But at that time, it would be.
But you're comfortable with that?
Correct.
Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Noting none, all those in, excuse me, staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL 22-02 with 10 conditions. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion in second, further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 12.
Item number 12 is layout plan 22-03 to reconfigure lot lines to create lots 1 and 2 of Powder House subdivision. The applicant and landowner is Little Guys LLC. Ben Brink is the agent, as well as KTM Design Solutions. Location of the property is 24120 and 24125 Highway 16A. Proposed size of the subdivision, well, as all the properties sit today, there are three separate properties. They are 27.06 acres. All combined, it is currently zoned planned unit development district. Existing land use is the Powder House Lodge and Cabins, and access is off Highway 16A. So, again, for reference, I do have the existing properties on the left-hand side of your screen and what the proposed lots will be on the right-hand side. I have them broken down by tax ID on the left-hand side, starting with tax ID 5072. It contains one guest cottage, 13 cabins, swimming pool, as well as two onsite wastewater treatment systems and one operating permit. The property there in the middle, 43515, contains a restaurant, three guest cottages, four motels, a storage warehouse, and one cabin, as well as three operating permits for the onsite wastewater. And lastly, the property on the far right is tax ID 59745. Contains a single-family residence, a garage/maintenance facility, as well as an onsite wastewater treatment system and an operating permit, and a double-sided sign that is properly permitted. Proposed lots on the right-hand side of your screen, Lot 1, the larger on the left-hand side, will become 24.29 acres. Will contain the restaurant, the four guest cottages, four motels, swimming pool, a storage warehouse, 14 cabins, four operating permits for the onsite wastewater treatment system, and two construction permits. Lot 2 of Powder House subdivision, the smaller one on the right, will become 2.77 acres, contain the single-family residence, the garage/maintenance facility, one construction permit for the onsite wastewater treatment system, as well as an operating permit, and it will also contain the double-sided sign. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and there were no objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that according to the survey submitted by the applicant, there are two structures currently located within the section line right-of-way. These structures were built in 1942, according to Department of Equalization records. Therefore, the property owner will need to enter into an encroachment agreement with Pennington County to resolve this issue, and that is included as a condition of approval. In February of this year, or sorry, February of last year, planning commission approved planned unit development minor amendment 21-02 to allow a reduced setback for a garage/maintenance facility on proposed Lot 2. In December of last year, the Board of Commissioners approved planned unit development amendment, major planned unit development amendment 21-17 to amend the existing planned unit development to allow a specialty slash recreational resort and add 25 rental cabins, staff housing, and dorms to the subject property according to Pennington County's ordering ordinance, Section 216. Because the property owners are changing the boundaries of the PUD, another major amendment will be required, and that is included as a condition of approval. With that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. Staff recommends approval of layout plan 22-03 with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
I just, maybe mine is more along the lines of where all this is going. I agree, and I think I understand. I mean, they're cleaning up the lots where they take five, the five lots, and they're going to go to the two main lots, so that's good. And then there's some items that have been there for a really long time, that, for 80 years, and that they're going to, they'll clean those up. But is there, is there something else that's coming as a result of all of these changes?
No, I don't believe so. I discussed this, you know, last year with the applicant moving forward, and I already know that a major planned unit development amendment would be required if he ever wanted to do what he's doing now, to basically combine these parcels. And he was aware of that moving forward, so.
Okay. But substantive changes that change the use and how it's being currently used, that kind of stuff? I mean, I'm trying to understand the reason for going through all of this.
Right, so that's what he proposed last year in December when he actually applied for the PUD amendment, where he added the additional uses, the dorms, additional cabins, things like that. So, I believe that's what's coming in the future. He wants to add more. He doesn't want to contend with that lot line between 5072 and 4315.
Sure, okay. Well, that all, that all makes sense to me, and I'm happy to see that it's following the process. So, thank you.
Right.
Further questions for staff? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? No, okay. With that, staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL 22-03 with nine conditions. Is there a motion?
Is he'll move?
Second.
Motion in second for approval, further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 13.
Cody Sacramural Planer. Item 13 is layout plan LPL 22-01. It's used to combine two lots to create Lot 45A of Burns Plaza MS 697. The applicant and landowner is Charles and Kimberly Plaska. The surveyor and agent is All Aspects Incorporated Brad Limbaugh. The surveyor and agent is All Aspects Incorporated Brad Limbaugh. Location of the property is one, two, two, eight, seven Deerfield Road. So this was heard before the planning commission on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, it was continued at the request of Commissioner Johnson, uh, due to the buildings, um, that were being built. Staff performed a site visit. And determined that the roof line of the detached garage had changed, so a building permit will be required. Dwayne, our ordinance enforcement officer, was when he did the site visit. He did not see a structure on the other property, but according to aerials, it does look like there was a structure on the other property. Uh, so a building permit for that structure will be required too. Um, we couldn't find any record of a building permit and Equalization doesn't have anything for the lot. Uh, so staff is recommending approval of layout plan LPL twenty-two dash zero one. With the seven conditions listed, but adding two conditions. The first condition that's added would be that a building permit be obtained for the work on the detached garage and the existing structure on lot forty-sixth. And, uh, the second condition would be that a new site survey showing the existing structure on lot forty-six be submitted to the planning department.
Okay. Questions for staff?
Just one. Cody, that, there's actually two. There's an old outhouse plus the, the little red building. Looks like the red building maybe is ten to fifteen feet long on one side. I have no idea the depth. All I was going to add was we want to make sure that they, they do the appropriate abandonment of the old outhouse too, if that's what it is. Uh, I think you've done a great job. I have no problems with it. Look, and I can't, you can't tell looking whether it's gonna interfere with the rendition or, uh, violate something on the building permit too. So I think the building's so old, as far as going, as far as, um, required a building permit, I don't know. I'd question that.
So, oh, sorry to interrupt. If, if it comes out that that structure was placed there prior to the, um, requirement of a building permit and they can prove that it was there prior to a building permit. That condition would just be null, it would meet the condition.
Good, cuz I, I'm pretty sure it did. It, it's old. It's, it's fifties stuff looking from the root. You know, that place was originally that and then was remodeled. Okay. But I, I don't think you'll have any problems with a building permit on that building. I'd move to approve then.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of, um, LPL twenty-two dash zero one for their discussion. Not, noting none, all those in favor, um, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item fourteen.
Item fourteen is layout plan LPL twenty-two dash zero four. Is to reconfigure lot lines to create lot ten R and eleven R of Bears Den subdivision. The applicant and landowner is Larry and Nancy Van Oberschel. Currently, the property is located at two, three, one, one, seven Bear Gulch Road. It involves two point eight nine acres. Uh, current zoning is rural residential district with an existing land use of residential. Access is off Bear Gulch Road and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Currently, as the property sits, uh, there's a single-family residence, uh, that was built in nineteen seventy-three per Department of Equalization records. And that, uh, applicant and landowner is current on their onsite wastewater treatment system. Uh, the proposed lots, proposed lot ten R will be approximately one point two-two acres and will contain the single-family residence and the wastewater treatment system. Uh, lot eleven R will be one point six, seven acres and will be vacant. Uh, this was routed around for interdepartmental review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. Uh, the applicant is requesting to adjust lot lines to construct an addition onto the single-family residence. Uh, the applicant's also applied for a rezone and a comprehensive plan that will be heard at later, later in this agenda. Uh, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing land uses in the area. So staff is recommending approval of layout plan LPL twenty-two dash zero four with conditions.
Questions for staff?
So. Th- this one is just to reconfigure the lot lines and I, and I got, I have no issue with that. But I'm, my only, this is a comment, I'm not opposed to this, is that in this instance, we're gonna, we're gonna move the lot line. And then we have to, uh, make a change to the comprehensive plan amendment to, or comprehensive plan amendment to. Rural residential to low-density district, and that's due to the lot size. Is that correct?
Uh, correct. The rural residential requires three acre lot size. It's currently legal non-conforming. Uh, the second you go and change anything through plating, it loses its non-conforming status.
Yeah. So, um, I just wanted to point, point that out, that sometimes, um, these things come back to the, to the commission where, where people will look at some lot. That has, that has changed and it looks like it's kind of on an island out in the middle of nowhere. And ultimately, um, it appears that, that the person just wants to move the lot line so they can add on to their house. You know, and that's how these things start. Fast forward ten years and different conversations are had, so that's my only comment.
Further questions? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL twenty-two dash zero four. With eleven conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for their discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item fifteen.
Item fifteen is comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-two dash zero one. Is to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from rural residential district to low-density residential district. The applicant and landowner is Larry and Nancy Van Oberschel. Currently, the lot sizes are one point one-three acres and one point seven-six acres, uh, so two point eight-nine, um, combined. It is accessed off Bear Gulch Road. Its, uh, current zone is rural residential with a residential use. There's no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, when looking at comprehensive plan amendments, we look at zoning, uh, within a half mile. Uh, the current zoning and the future land use for the property is rural residential, which has a minimum lot size of three acres. Uh, maximum single-family residence density of one dwelling unit per acre. Uh, setbacks are twenty-five feet for all property lines. Uh, the predominant land use is residential with private utilities. The proposed zoning is low-density residential, which has a minimum lot size of two acre, or half an acre. With a maximum single-family residential density of two acres. With setbacks of twenty-five feet on the front and back and eight on the sides. Land use is residential and utilities can be private or public. Uh, surrounding zoning districts within a half mile, uh, to the north, there's open space. To the south is rural resident, rural residential, open space and suburban residential. To the east is open space and to the west is open space and agriculture district. Uh, future land use within a half mile, there's open space to the north. Uh, to the south, there's suburban residential district and rural residential district with open space. East is open space, west is open space with rural residential. Uh, and land uses within a half mile, uh, to the north is open space. To the south is residential and open space. To the east is open space and to the west is residential. Uh, this was routed around for interdepartmental review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. Uh, future land use within, they identify several parcels of suburban residential district within one half mile of the subject property. Which has similar setbacks to the low-density residential. The applicant has submitted the layout plan LPL twenty-two dash zero four to adjust the lot lines. They've also applied to rezone the property. That'll be heard on the next agenda item. Uh, staff finds no significant, significant issues with the request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing land uses within the area. So staff does recommend approval of comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-two dash zero one.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this one?
I probably missed something here, Cody. Uh, so the red marks is, is where we're going to change to low-density.
Yes, those.
What about the other part that's already yellow that's wider?
The, like, this part right here? These are, sorry, you're referring to these lots? Those are individual lots, um, within that subdivision and that subdivision as a whole was zoned rural residential district. So those will stay rural residential district.
I thought that is low residential, or low-density, I mean.
Nope. It is, sorry, it is rural residential district.
Oh, okay.
The majority of those lots, though, are legal non-conforming.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Mister Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
You guys are definitely confronted by a lot, isn't there a lot of these places that are privately owned and dropped into the Black Hills National Forest? And, and we end up looking at these things non-conforming, then we try to bring them back in line, a small area. This is a quite a workload for you guys for these little tiny areas. It's amazing.
Uh, yeah, there are quite a few in the area and I believe, uh, um, Brittany and Jason are, are, the comprehensive plan is a fluent document. And I believe they're working on some changes and I am not sure if that's gonna be addressed. I assume it'll be addressed, though, these areas that are like this, that are legal non-conforming with lot sizes.
All I'm hearing is the east end of our state doesn't look at things like this. The workload that goes along with dropping these into the Black Hills National Forest to try to apply them to our Pennington County ordinances. And the commissioners do the same, isn't it? This is quite a, actually financially committed type of deal for the county. There's a lot of work here in doing these things. Thank you.
And, and normally they don't get done. It, they just, they sit there and they exist as legal non-conforming. And then someone comes in, wants to move their property line ten feet. And the next thing you know, they, they've gotta do a layout plan, they've gotta change the comprehensive plan and they gotta rezone it. Because with the change now, that, that, that makes this, this happen. As opposed to really looking at it and saying, well, jeez, the majority of these are, are less than low-density residential. Maybe the whole subdivision should be recategorized based on current lot size, but again, a problem for a different day.
Yeah, and, and that we're gonna have increased pressure here for a couple of years of people that, coming into the area that aren't familiar with our area. Let alone from, uh, the east side of the state to out of state. It's, that's quite a workload and, and expensive one to do these things and do them correctly for our auspices. Thank you. I, I just didn't mean to stand up and try to make it a pulp.
No, I, I, I. I made a comment on the fir, on the, on the front side of these three that, that the, the agreement of this board to let this person move their property. So they can add an addition on to their house has potential consequences X number of years down the road. Um, and we see some of those things come back, or at least I have in my tenure here on the board. But, um, I, I'm not opposed to the guy wanting to add on to his place.
Thank you, Mister Chair, for letting me speak.
Further commentary on item fifteen? First time I've ever said that. Noting none, uh, staff recommends approval of comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-two dash zero one. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Has I already added a motion?
Second.
Motion and second for approval, um, for the discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Item fifteen carries. We are on sixteen.
Uh, item sixteen is rezone twenty-two dash zero one. It's to rezone two point eight-nine acres from rural residential district to low-density residential district. The applicant and landowner is Larry and Nancy Van Oberschel. The location of the property is two, three, one, one, three and two, three, one, one, seven Bear Gulch Road. It involves two point eight-nine acres. Current zoning is rural residential district. Existing land use is residential and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, when reviewing, uh, rezones, we look at, uh, current zoning in the area and future land use in the area. Again, the current, the property is currently a zoned rural residential district with a future land use of rural residential district. Which requires three acres, uh, maximum single-family residence density of one, setbacks of twenty-five feet from all property lines. Uh, residential use is the predominant land use with private utilities and wastewater. The proposed zoning is low-density residential district, which is a minimum of a half acre. Maximum single-family resident density is two dwelling units per acre. Setbacks are twenty-five feet from the front and rear and eight from the sides. Predominant land use is residential. Utilities and wastewater are private or public. Uh, we look at the surrounding zoning districts, uh, to the north for all zoning, for all, uh, for current zoning and future land use within a half mile is all open space. To the south is rural residential, open space, suburban res, and suburban residential. To the east is open space and to the west is open space and agriculture. Future land use to the south is suburban residential, uh, rural residential and open space. East is open space and to the west is open space and rural residential. Uh, land uses, uh, there is residential and open space to the south and there is residential to the west. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. Um, future land use in the area identifies several parcels of suburban residential district within a half mile of the subject property. Which has similar setbacks on land uses to rural residential. Again, applicants have submitted a layout plan LPL twenty-two dash zero four to, um, to adjust lot lines. Uh, the comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-two dash zero one to change the future land use. Um, staff finds no significant issues with the request, as it appears to be in harmony with the existing land use within the area. So staff is recommending approval of rezone RZ twenty-two dash zero one.
Questions for staff?
Just kind of, I have a general question. How much did it cost these folks to move the lot line to build the addition on their house?
Yeah, I'm not sure what a surveyor costs.
Wow.
You, you gotta understand, though, now their property is rezoned. They could subdivide one of the lots into three lots and the other one into two. That's, that's the value that was just gained as well. I'm trying to state that here. And, and all, all because I, I don't know, I. Is there some other mechanism that would allow someone to, um, get a, get an exception to move their lot line without going through this process?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Getting a big row from the peanut gallery over there.
They, they would have to go through the, uh, still have to go through the plating process. I know, um, I believe adjusting lot lines, there's gonna be a little different process for adjusting lot lines than full subdivisions. But they'd still have to go through this process.
Got it. Further questions for staff? No one wants to speak on this issue?
I'm of approval of RZ, RZ twenty-two dash zero one.
Sir, second.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item seventeen.
Uh, so item seventeen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-two dash zero one. Uh, it's to add section three twenty-one of the hard rock mining, uh, to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. It's to establish a hard rock mining requirement. Uh, this was heard before the planning commission on February ninth, twenty twenty-two for public comment. Not much has changed in it. Uh, actually, the document's exactly the same. Megan and I are still, uh, going through the research of what the planning commission has requested. Um, we've met with an expert in the field on what, um, we shouldn't, shouldn't do in ordinance. Um, so there's gonna be a fairly significant change to some of this, some of the, um, information that's in this ordinance. Um, so staff is recommending to continue ordinance amendment OA twenty-two dash zero one to the March twenty eighth, uh, twenty twenty-two planning commission meeting.
Twentieth was it, Cody?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth. Thank you.
Yep. It's on the last page of the packet, too. Questions for staff? I'm excited to see the, the new revision. I was going through it and I was like, well, wait a minute. I commented on that and I turned to the back, I was like, ah, I didn't make any changes yet. So. Questions for staff? Noting none, staff recommends, uh, to continue OA twenty-two dash zero one to the March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two planning commission meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second to continue further dis, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item eighteen, the county board report.
The Board of Commissioners will hear Planning Commission's recommendations from the February fourteenth meeting on Tuesday, March first.
Anything else? Okay. Items from the public, 19, noting no one in the, in the audience. Items from the staff?
Uh, we just have one item. We did hire a building inspector. Um, he is, um, set to start on April 4th. Um, he did have to buy and sell a home out of state, so, um, it's been a little challenging. Um, he is a previous employee, so he is coming back to work for the office, so.
Good. Anything else?
Nope.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
The way we do our minutes now for the, the Planning Commission, do the Board of Commissioners ever get to see that we actually have some constructive directional things on other things? In other words, if they're not watching, do they ever get to see that we actually take these to heart and go home? I mean, or do they get to see the minutes, and if they don't watch the others, they don't get it?
They get to see the minutes, and usually the sitting commissioner, if there was significant discussion on the item, will speak to it.
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, I'd have.
Well, I was just wondering whether a person should go on rather than wasting riches and, and the board's time. Sometimes want to bring up these things that sound off the wall to one person, but maybe not to me. Um, whether I should just write it down and address it and send it to them instead, save you guys my time. Thank you.
Um, items from the membership.
Uh, I'm going to be gone the next two meetings. And I'm not going in for surgery or anything, but.
Not anything fun.
No, I'm going to Africa for almost a month, so. I don't do that normally, so.
You're going camera, honey.
You could zoom in.
Yeah, you can zoom in. Show us some.
Oh, yes, that's true. I didn't think about that, yeah.
It might be in the middle of the night, but you'll be fine.
I don't know. I, I, I'm not real certain the wifi in Tanzania and places like that are going to be all that reliable, but.
Um, I wrote down several things that I wanted to go over that, um, come up in various ways and various CUPs. Um, uh, the first one was, there was a specific question if some of, some of the questions from the emails could be answered. Um, and I don't know the best way for staff to do that, but, um, for example, that I know that there were questions, and it, and it sounds like maybe there's some confusion with regards to some of the lot splits, and why were, why were they allowed to do that? And I wasn't allowed to do that, and, and some of, and without going into the details of all of those, is there any way that we could review those emails and, and give those folks a call and give them, uh, give them a response? Either we can't answer it, we can't answer it, here's what we know about it, those types of things?
Sure, and I did, um, speak with, uh, Chutima about a couple of them, and she did respond to them on Friday.
Okay.
To some of those. Um, Mr. Colson, he, he had a long, and he had kind of some questions integrated in his comments.
Sure.
Um, but the one that had the, the, the comments where he had like six or eight different questions, uh, the planner did respond to them on Friday, so.
I want to make sure, I mean, some of those emails are written like, uh, we were on trial up here and, and had to, you know, respond to them. Um, not really what we do, but I do want to make sure that if there, if there are answers or, or things that maybe could be clarified, um, to, you know, answer their, their, their questions, which ultimately grow into frustration, that we could, we could do what we could to try to alleviate some of that. Okay. Um, the next thing was the LLCs and DBAs, um, that come up, um, and, and Charlie's questions about that, and how do we, how do we move forward? Um, is it something where we would have to request that in the ordinance to say that if this, if, if the property owner is going to be acting as a DBA, then they have to submit that as the request and also provide information on who the DBA is, or is it staff's responsibility to go to the, the state of South Dakota website that lists those? How, how do we, how do we get the information?
Mr. Chair, there was one of them that actually had it in today's, had the DBAs listed. There's one of the.
So you're saying simply a request that says if the vacation home rental will be operated under a DBA, the DBA paperwork from the state shall be included in the.
Be identified their license. It's, it's a law. It's, they're supposed to be doing it. If they operate a business of any sort under a name other than their own name, they are to file a DBA. Now, a lot of people don't. I'm sure Megan's smiling because they don't. But I think when we're dealing, especially with LLCs who have limited liability, and they're coming in there and neighbors are saying people are going to set fires, they tear up and down the roads, going to run over their kids or their dogs. It's important that we look at that.
Sure. I'm trying to find out the mechanism that we can make sure that that happens.
It would be something that would need to be added to our ordinance typically, unless there's considerations as a condition. Um, because ultimately, because I'm an attorney, I look at DBAs and LLCs and business organizations a little bit differently. I mean, they are to protect you, but a lot of times it's because people just don't want to have their personal assets connected to their business assets. So I know a lot of people look at business organizations as a way to avoid liability, and they are to a certain extent, but they also aren't. Um, it's really complicated, and I'm not a business organization, organizations lawyer. Um, obviously, I learned a little bit about it, but it's, it's one of those tough things because I know Charlie has talked about especially the out-of-state LLCs and the DBAs, and how do we figure out who these people are, and so on and so forth. And that gets really sticky within the law, because there is specific case law that says that essentially businesses are people, and we have to treat them that way. Um, which do I necessarily agree with personally? No, but the Supreme Court of the United States said that that's true. So we have to treat these entities like they are people. Um, so the Constitution also applies to them, so we can't necessarily be keeping out, out-of-state, um, organizations from doing business within, in our state. And I don't think that that's necessarily what we want, but I wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Because under the Constitution, we really can't limit in that type of way. But if we want to find out more information about them, just so that way it's available to the commission and available through county documentation and all that great stuff, I would say that either as a condition or just adding, adding it to our ordinance.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, in the case of an LLC, they literally file it yearly, and you can find out who the members are and who is responsible and operating the LLC, because they have to list a managing partner. Uh, they have to list a contact, a legal contact, and what I'm concerned about, just take the mining. What if somebody stepped forward with the mining and they had to, to post surety in regards to, uh, the conservation measures? People aren't just going to automatically assume an LLC is fine. They're, they're going to want to know who it is. And the surety, i- if we get a surety from them, it's going to list the LLC, it's going to list every individual. That's how difficult this is. And DBAs are the same way. People cannot contact people who, under a DBA unless they can go somewhere and find out who it is.
Well, you can actually look up DBAs on the South Dakota Secretary of State website, so you can find DBAs. You can find the business with which the DBA is associated.
But Megan, my point is that it's like we're looking the other way. We don't care whether it's a DBA, is what I'm saying. And I don't think that's correct when you have people oppose some of the things we do. They have the right to know who's doing it.
And I guess for me, I just look at DBAs as, most of the time, people that have a DBA, that's just the business name. It's probably the name of the business that they've had for a very long time. And usually, DBAs aren't a nefarious way to avoid having to deal with the problems that their business has, because a DBA is kind of, it's, it's not really fictional, but it's kind of a fictional entity. It doesn't necessarily provide you any additional protections under the law, or at least as, as far as I'm aware.
Do you know, the state, you go in and read, uh, revenue, tax revenue licenses on businesses, and it'll say on there if they're operating as all motorsports, that's what I used it, and then it'd say DBA, Charles Zare Johnson. Boom. If it was filed. And the right, and the law says you're supposed to file it. If you're operating a business under something other than your name in the state of South Dakota, it says it's supposed to be filed. And I don't think we should look the other way. We've got to give people an opportunity to know who the DBA is. And some of these people on these vacation home rentals, I've looked at some of them, and they've got anywhere from six to 10 different names. And this one, today's was a good example. He's got a total amount of DBAs, because they name these cabins, they do, nobody knows who's what.
Yeah, and I want to, I want to not talk about the specific ones of today, but the, your, your question is, is how, if they are going to apply as a DBA, how do we get them to provide the DBA paperwork that, that says who the DBA is? And you just want that on record as part of the application?
If they list the cabin name, and that's what the, in their application, okay, then where's the DBA on it? It's that simple. Where's the DBA doing business as?
Okay. So functionally, mechanically, how do we, how do we, so we can either make a change to the ordinance, and I'm not sure, um, we're ready for opening up the ordinance for inspection and, and review again. Um, is this something that can just be done from the staff administrative level, where if we get, if that gets applied, we, we require that? Or is that treating DBAs unfairly compared to a normal person?
Can I throw in one more thing? LLCs would fall under the same sort of thing, because you could, could say, are you in good standing with the state of South Dakota? They, they issue it. That means your report is up to date.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're going to do it, I would just have it as a condition. Just list, list your, your business entities under which have an interest in this venture, essentially.
As, as a condition. So then we would write that as a condition. It would get approved as a condition, and they would then have to supply the DBA back to you to have on file. But that doesn't provide the information to the neighbors necessarily during the review.
It technically, I mean, it wouldn't provide it during the review, but they could get it through a public records request through the county. So it would essentially be available to them.
Or they could hop on the Secretary of State's website.
Or that.
Yeah.
Which takes about three seconds as opposed to a couple of weeks for a request, so.
Okay. Would that, does that help solve the question?
I think just so long as it's available to them, but if we're not, if we're not asking them to do it, it's not available to them.
Okay. Um, the next thing was the emergency access route, and I got to thinking about that, you know, when you stay at a hotel on the back of the door, there's, there, there's, there's, here's this, here's how, here's the best way to get out of this building if it's on fire. And so some things have come up today, and I think that this is really good, um, conversation, and, and, um, we don't require that as part of the ordinance right now, but it's similar to the fire pits, um, comment that we kind of has a, have a, has a standard condition. Is there a standard condition that we can add that, that in addition to having the emergency access route out of, out of the VHR? Um, is there, uh, I, I'm really, I'm asking, is, is, for the group here, is, do we all agree that it's probably a good thing to? I don't care if they have a hand-drawn map that shows something, but I, I've rented these things before, and, and I agree with you. You get this packet of stuff, and you're flipping through it to find out where the light switches are and that kind of stuff. And, and if that's in there, um, they now will have more information in front of them than someone going to a hotel, even though a hotel likely isn't at the end of the dead-end road.
I think they could do that administratively.
Could, well, and we've done that with the fire pit and meeting the fire codes in the Black Hills National Forest. So I, I'm thinking that that's a really good idea to add as a standard condition in VHRs.
Mr. Chair, we've, we've asked sometimes that people had fire mitigation. We've had people look, uh, have the fire marshal go out and, and do that. And some of these, um, vacation home rentals, uh, I'd say a good percentage of them are, actually have that same document already in there. They actually do as part of their, their, what we, they thought we were asking. So I, I agree with you. I think it ought to just be a requirement.
Okay. Uh, really good things, um, really good things coming out of today's meeting, so appreciate that. Anything else from membership? I'll shut my mouth.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jim.
Not to disappoint, but I fear I will be here at the next meeting. It's the two following. I know you'll all be waiting with bated breath, so.
I'd like to think out loud for a second on this Clarkson Road thing, uh, having been in law enforcement to Montana and forest fires and everything else.
I want to make sure that it's general and it's not specific to eight and nine. We, we, we can't talk about those after the fact.
All right, but, but it's the, the general idea, um, and what you're talking about, like on the back of the motels, I know I was on the road for years and looked at those things, and then didn't look at them and never looked at them after a while. If you've ever been in a forest fire, a, a, and you've got a single way out, and the forest fire is coming down the road, you don't stand and look and say, let's see, it's going to be on the left, it's going to be on the right. This single-lane road thing with forest fires, it's a disaster. I, I, I mean, it's like going up in an airplane and not having a parachute or, or a boat without having a life vest. I, I, I mean, everything in the Black Hills has burned one time or another over the years. That's just, that's the nature of the beast. And we've got, what, 40, over 40 houses coming out one road in this particular case? You know, I, I understand there are laws and we go along with them, but boy, if you've ever been in a forest fire and, and, and watched people trying to figure what to do, this is rough.
Well, and I think I can, I can explain, just because you are, you are newer to the commission, so I think that you don't know the background of all of this with the 40 lot rule. So we passed the 40 lot rule in 2018, 19?
No, 2013. It was in the subdivision regulation.
Oh, was it that long ago? I thought it was earlier than that. So a lot of these residences get platted through the city's planning jurisdiction, and they waive those requirements. Um, so they essentially allow more houses to be put out on these dead-end roads and don't require developers to put in another access point. So because of the way the statutory framework is set up, there is very little that the county can do to stop the plating. Now, we have added into our ordinance that you must, um, have to be able to comply to get your building permit.
For a dwelling unit.
Yes, for a dwelling, but a lot of these residences were platted before that ordinance went into effect, so they're grandfathered. And so now we're looking at, they are given their building permit and then just looking at the use of that property afterwards.
Yeah, well.
And that's a, that's an issue that continues still now, is the city allowing more units out on these roads than probably is safe.
It, it's just a concern. I, I, I just, I, I mean, it's, it's one thing to look at this and look at that, look at Westbury Trail Fires and all kinds of things like that, but when something happens, the laws go out the window. People can't get out. I don't know. It's, it's rough. I think it'd be very dangerous.
If the fire's this way, I'm going this way.
Mr. Chair, Mike, the nice part about what you're talking about is the ones that are in that, uh, three-mile district that, that makes referring to that the city gets involved, and most of, most of those have better road development because of the requirements that go along with the county in the three-mile. They're, they're usually not poor. The ones that we look at that are farther out, that the city never got involved, we should be exceptionally careful because of the road development and the, the ever-increasing size of emergency equipment.
And Chairman, if I could speak to it, I know that in our ordinance, there was this concern with flooding in kind of the same instance.
Yeah.
Um, and that's why in the VHR ordinance, they're just prohibited in floodways, uh, because there was a lot of concern about the access and the same type of concerns, but instead of fire, it was a flooding. So they just prohibited it in the ordinance. So if the VHR is in a floodway, that's just not a use that's allowed. A single-family residences is just not a vacation home rental.
So something to consider.
Further items from the membership? Noting none, uh, adjournment is the next agenda item. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
That was slower than normal. Motion and second for adjournment. Motion and second for adjournment, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We're adjourned, thanks everybody.